Thank you. We'd like to call the city council meeting to order. We'd ask that if you have your cellphone, would you please put them on silence or turn them off? We're going to ask that Councilman Butcher would lead us in prayer. We're going to ask that Councilman Jackson would lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the opportunity for us all to serve the city of Shreveport and its citizens. Lord, please protect us and watch over us as we work through the issues of the city and try to make Shreveport a better place. In your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor? Councilwoman Scholz? Councilwoman Nettleson, please?
President?
Councilwoman Bushner?
Here.
Councilwoman Bass?
Here.
Councilwoman Bushner?
I'm here. Thank you. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and special meeting Monday, June 13, 2022, and the city council meeting Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Does any member of the council have any awards or recommendation of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Mr. Whitehorn, do you have any awards, recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
The mayor will have some comments tomorrow.
Thank you. You have any other communication from the mayor at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Does any member have any questions concerning, relative to property standards for Mr. Green at this time? Anyone from Mr. Green? Thank you. Mr. Clark, is Mr. Clark here? Mr. Clark, do you have a master plan committee report?
Good afternoon, members of council. We don't really have a formal report today. There are some things that are about to start unfolding that you'll be very interested in that we're going to be submitting to the MPC board at its July meeting. We will be submitting the residential rental code amendment, codes to the MPC board in July. We will be addressing the liquor concerns that we've been working on for the last six months to the MPC board. And I think that they'll be very interesting to you as they make their way to the city council. I think there are going to be some very inspiring, uplifting amendments and changes that are being recommended that could only improve. I apologize, I lost my voice somewhat earlier today, but there are going to be some changes that I think you're going to find to be very interesting and along the lines of the master plan. And as you know, I shared it with you. Unfortunately, or fortunately, with the master plan, we basically started over. The master plan was done with the existence of the Shreveport Cato Metropolitan Planning Commission of Cato Parish. And so, we're going through that process of making sure that both entities are divided out. We don't know exactly what the parish of Cato will be choosing to do. They have the option of developing their own master plan, starting from the beginning themselves and developing a master plan because they have been basically removed from the existing master plan. So, there are going to be some interesting things that are going to be happening. We're still considering the possibility of having a master plan advisory committee that, because we still feel very strongly that there's a need for regional planning and that should always be the connectivity between the city of Shreveport, the parish of Cato, the city of Boweja, and the parish of Boweja. And we're going, we may be coming up with some ideas of having at least a representative from the council, representative from the commission, representative from the three boards that we have in existence to be able to make recommendations going forward with the master plan. And I shared with you at an earlier time that we will be working very closely with the administration and possibly obtaining some funding in order to get the master plan reviewed, updated, and the necessary changes that will be necessary. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clark. When does that meeting again, when did you say it was?
Sir?
When are y'all going to present these again?
We're going to present these to the MPC board the first Wednesday in July. And then, if they agree with them, then they're going to forward them on up to you all.
On the alcohol especially, would you be, would you be available maybe to come to a public safety committee meeting and kind of talk about some of these changes that we have?
We'd be happy to.
I'm going to, we've got some changes on the agenda today as far as alcohol goes. And I would like to have a public safety committee meeting to kind of discuss that coming up. But I would love to hear what the MPC is proposing, so I'll get with you on that.
And we made sure that when we started looking at and addressing the alcohol beverage ordinance that we included that division of the police department at the very beginning so that we wouldn't be out making recommendations about stuff we really didn't know a whole lot about. They would be actually making the recommendations. And we've suggested to them to work very closely with the city attorney's office to start the process of amending Chapter 10 to reflect some of the changes that we are recommending to the board.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is there, did everyone receive the budget to the actual financial report?
It'll be available tomorrow, yes.
Thank you. Public hearing is non. Mr. Whitehorn, would there be any legislation added tomorrow?
Not good on the world.
Today, we will hear public comments on non-item agenda and also item agendas. You have three minutes to speak. The vice chair will control the time and call them.
Okay, John Glover?
Good evening. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 121, Shreveport 711118. I have a number of resolutions that I want to speak to as well as ordinances. We'll begin with the resolution since I am on a time-limited situation. The first resolution that I speak to, I spoke to about two weeks ago, which was Resolution 88, and the need for the council members not to support repealing the surety bond aspect of that document. If our tax dollars are not safeguarded, whereby something should come about, then we lose $10 million, a million per year, a million whatever it was the contract said. I never understood or understand how it is that we don't want that warranty to be there. Number two, Resolution 89, the Roa Omega and Friends Incorporated. Now, this is a $16,500 endeavor. The Good Time Row has already rolled. So, why are we giving $16,500 after the fact? Then, if you move forward to Section D, Ordinance 81, now this is where I always have a problem with the amending of the budget. We're here at the end of, what is the budget, where, from year to year, June to June?
Calendar year, Ms. White.
June to June.
No, ma'am.
Calendar year.
Calendar year, okay, so December, okay. Now, I looked at each one of these amendments and I was like, Amendment 84 talked about jet bridges. And I know a year and a half or so ago, we had a whole presentation about jet bridges and how much it was going to cost and how much was going to be expended for those jet bridges. That new director that we had just hired was here giving us a presentation on this. Now, this item seemingly has an addition, and that's the airport lighting, which is $2.5 million. Now, I would like to know to what area is the lighting going to be addressing? Is it the lights that are all out that crosses over I-20? Or are there lights on the south end of the airport that's going to be addressed? Where specifically are these lights going to be addressed? And those jet bridges, I'd like to know where they're going to be situated as well. Didn't bring my cellphone up here so I could look at some things a little bit better. But, you know, to continue to amend a budget that has already been addressed, no matter what may come about, you didn't spend the dollars last year, so they are here now available this year. We just need to be good stewards about our dollars. We just don't want you to use them because they're there, but have indeed a real reason why you use them. Thank you.
That's it, Chair.
Thank you. We will have an executive appointment to be considered tomorrow. I understand Mr. Carbin is here. Mr. Clark, would you like to come? Do we have any questions for Mr. Carbin at this time?
You sure you haven't enjoyed retirement?
I'm pretty sure of that. No, it's a pleasure to be in the chambers today. It's always an honor to be here. I want to thank the mayor for nominating me for this position and ask that you would be supportive of it when you vote tomorrow. As you know, I work for SWEPCO. We have a big investment in downtown, both with our business and our headquarters here, but in our underground network that we continue to upgrade to support activities and growth in downtown. Certainly want to see continued growth with residential projects downtown and as well as with office projects and, you know, all the things that are going on in downtown that's good right now. And, you know, if there are some questions, be happy to answer those. Otherwise, just appreciate your support tomorrow.
Mr. Carbin, I appreciate you coming. I had forgot about it, but when you mentioned SWEPCO, my grandmama want to know why I elected Bill so high. Congratulations, man. Any other questions for Mr. Carbin?
Nope. Just thank you for your willingness to continue to serve at any capacity, let me say that first of all, and for allowing me to ring your cellphone and text you at all kinds of times of the night and day. So, just thank you for being you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Carbin.
Thank you.
There are no items on the consent agenda to be adopted. So, this particular time, Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with regular legislative agenda legislation?
Resolution 88, to repeal Amendment Number One to Resolution Number 87 of 2021, which added a clause to the contract between the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, and C. Edwards Concept LLC, requiring a performance bond to be provided by the contractor and to amend other portions of the contract to be consistent with the request for proposal. Resolution 89, authorizing the execution of the cooperative endeavor agreement between Roa Omega and Friends, Inc. Resolution 90, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana Department of Treasury and the state of Louisiana. Resolution 91, stating the cities of Shreveport's approval of Studio Network Shreveport I LLC, partial transfer of ownership to 624 Downtown Lofts LLC. Resolution 92, stating the city of Shreveport's approval to Studio Network Shreveport I LLC, partial transfer of ownership to Las Palmas Group Lofts LLC. Resolution 93, employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, not exceeding $62,500,000 of general obligations refunding bonds in one or more series to a taxable or tax-exempt basis. Resolution 94, to support the geographic information system, GIS, humanities laboratory at Louisiana State University, Shreveport. Resolution 95, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for purchase of a new medic unit for the Shreveport Fire Department, RFP Number 22-809. Resolution 96, a proclamation, resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held to fill the vacancy in the office of the city marshal, city of Shreveport, for the expired term thereof, to set the dates thereof and other pertinent matters.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 12, 2022?
Resolution 97, authorizing the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management.
Any question? Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of orders not to be adopted prior to July 12?
Ordinance 90, to amend Section 10-84 of Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances relative to physical separation of sales of high alcohol content liquor, content liquor, for consumption off premises. Resolution 91, to amend Chapter 10, Article 4, Division 2, Section 10-175 of the Code of Ordinances regarding hours of operation for retail dealer of alcohol none downtown zoning districts.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, and I missed it, on, I believe it is Resolution 90. It's authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and Louisiana Department of Treasury. Last year, I was contacted by Senator Barry Milligan, who served southeast Cato and southeast Shreveport in reference to a grant that was available for $200,000 for a park in that area of town. He was able to secure that money, and that's what this is for. There has been some talk between the parish, myself, and Ms. Raygold, and I think Chief Whitehorn may have been there, I'm not sure. We had a meeting about where we would put a park, and so this is some seed money. But since then, I've had some conversations with some local businesses, some pretty high-powered local businesses that may be willing to donate us some land. So, this will be a, it'd be between the city and the parish working together to get this together. So, that's what that is. I've had a couple of calls on it. And that's why it specifically says southeast Shreveport, because it was supposed to be in Senator Milligan's district. So, and then, I think that, yeah, that's it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, what that was, and I apologize for missing it.
Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Information I received said it was supposed to go to Shreveport as a whole. I don't have anything that says it has to be assigned to southeast Shreveport.
I think that the intent was for southeast Shreveport. I'm not sure if it has to go into our general fund, but the intent was for a park to go in southeast Shreveport.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with orders on staff and reading and final passage?
Ordinance 81, amending the 2022 budget for street special revenue fund. Ordinance 82, amending the 2022 budget for capital projects fund. Ordinance 83, amending the 2022 budget for general fund. Ordinance 84, amending the 2022 airport capital improvement fund budget. Ordinance 85, amending the 2022 community development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 86, amending the 2022 general fund budget. Ordinance 87, amending the 2022 general fund budget. Ordinance 88, amending the 2022 general fund budget. Ordinance 89, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2022 of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form of fixing the details and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the application of the proceeds thereof to the project as defined herein, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
We have no property standards, ABO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC, ZBA appeals to consider tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk report?
I do not have one.
Executive session, there's none. At this particular time, we will move to a special meeting. Purpose of the meeting is to hear the request from the Shreveport Police Department for suspension of alcohol beverage permit for Fat Tuesday operating at Aunt Urban Lounge.
Mr. Chair, we need to adjourn the regular meeting, and then we need to wait until 3:30 to start the special meeting.
Okay. If nothing else, come.
I did have one thing, I did. I had one thing.
Okay.
On the street where Marshal Caldwell's office is, that building that they practice out of?
Pearl Street, yeah, Pearl Road.
I would like to, I know you were talking about doing the building, but to build his name. I would like to have the street dedicating his name to, and I don't know, some actual support. I'm going to ask to add that on the agenda for tomorrow, and I'm just asking all my colleagues' support on that.
You should add Councilman Butcher as a co-sponsor there, because he had it on there but took it off. We'll start talking about the building.
Okay, sound good?
I'd actually, Councilman, I'd actually was going to do the Texas Street in front of the city court, but I've had a request from a couple of people in the marshal's office to actually rename that, not just dedicate. And I was going to look into what that took to rename that street. I don't think there's any, is it Pearls? What is that street, Carl?
Peabody.
Peabody, I'm sorry. To rename that street, because there's no businesses or buildings on that block except for the training center. And I didn't know what the legality of that was. I don't know if you want to hold up and look into that, because I will support what you're doing. But if we could rename the street.
That'd be great.
Thank you. For the businesses that come, we're now adjourned, and we have a special meeting. What time you said the special meeting?
2:30.
3:30.
Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Then, yeah, we're ready.
What time is it?
3:30.
Okay. That clock there got 3:30, are we ready? 3:30, thank you. Ma'am?
That clock's a little off.
Oh, that clock is wrong, okay, that's what. We'd like to call this special meeting to order. We would state the purpose of the meeting is to hear the request from the Shreveport Police Department for a suspension of an alcohol beverage permit for Fat Tuesday operating at Aunt Urban Lounge, and no other business will be conducted at this particular meeting. We've already had the pledge, we've already had the prayer. So, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor? Councilwoman Scholz?
Here.
Councilwoman Bushner?
President?
Councilwoman Bushner?
Here.
Councilman Bass?
Here.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bushner?
Here.
Thank you. Purpose of this meeting is to hear the request of the Shreveport Police Department for suspension of an alcohol beverage permit for Fat Tuesday opening at Aunt Urban Lounge. Do we have anyone to request to speak?
Do you want to speak, Ms. Bulleye?
Public comment?
At this time, we have public comments. We have two of them.
I don't know. I know that there's some citizens there, or is it the situation there?
Yes, we have public comments right now. Your chair will control the time.
Oh, I apologize about that. Mr. Willie Myers?
Miss?
I'm sorry, Miss, Miss Willie Myers. And I know who Willie Myers is, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Yes, I am the Willie Myers you think I am. My name is Willie Myers, and I live at 267 Vine, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101. I am here because I think I sent you all an email about this bar, Urban Lounge. I wasn't sure whether Urban Lounge or Fat Tuesday, Fat Tuesday, Urban Lounge. I don't care what you call it. This bar is located behind my house. I've been living there for over 20 years. And during the pandemic was the time when quote-quote, this bar, this new owner or whatever of Urban Bar, Urban Lounge opened, and it opened with a bang. They open at 1:30 in the morning, and they go from 1:30 until 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning. And I'm talking about loud music. Y'all, I'm 80 years old. I don't have to listen at this all night long from Tuesday till Sunday. Women hollering, cars racing up and down, shooting, and then, that's good for those who enjoy that, but I'm at the age where I need to get my rest. So, I am asking you all, please do not allow whatever the name of the bar is to- to suspend their license, and for as I'm concerned, you can close them down. Thank you.
Carla Blanco?
Hello, I'm Carla Blanco, I live at 247 Vine Street, uh, just a couple of houses down from her. I would like to say the club is, um, loud is not even the word. They seem very destructive. The noise is so loud that it just bangs the walls, the racing cars up and down the streets. They open probably at midnight, I'm not sure, one or midnight, but that's when they open. They start up, and it is non-stop. I don't even think they close any night of the week. The trash is just there every morning, you can see where the party, the tire marks. I mean, it's, it's incredible, it's off the chart. I just don't see Reed, you know, trying to open this club, there's nothing good going on there. So.
Ms. Blanco, how long have you lived in that area?
Uh, thirteen years.
Thank you.
And I've never heard, there's, there's other clubs around. And, and we don't, I don't hear the problem, and there is another one, but I'm not gonna talk about them, but this particular club seems that they're doing a lot more than partying over there.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, when is the last time that, uh, that this happened? When, I mean.
Well, I mean, it just got closed down, you know, recently. Yeah, it's been closed.
Have you had any trouble since April?
Nope, not, not with them.
No, I'm, I mean, in the area?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure have.
Ma'am, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ma'am, may I ask you a question? When you say they're doing more than partying, what do you mean? What are your?
Um, well, I, I, there's an alley that comes behind there, and you can smell all the smoke that they're smoking over there. You can hear the parties outside, there's so many people that they're outside. And the cars, it looks like a circus. One night, I drove down there, I just wanted to see what, what was going on, and I could not get off of my street. I, I had to sit at the light, and I sat there for about ten minutes until another car decided to do a little fishtail, and, you know, he didn't come real close, but it, you know, I mean, if he would have maybe hit a rock or something, he could have. But I couldn't even get off of my street, because I wanted to see what was going on, but the traffic from that club to another one, um, that is just, because they open up late, so everybody pours in there when it opens. And it, and they go up and down our street, gunshot, I've called numerous times on, I can't even count. As a matter of fact, I don't call anymore, because they don't come out.
You done, Councilman?
Yes, Councilman.
One other question.
Thank you.
So, this, this is not completely stopped since, since Ants shut down?
Uh, well, we just, we don't have the boom-boom going on at one, two, and three. I mean, it, this is noise, trash, a lot of traffic going up and down a very quiet street.
Chair, may I?
This is, this is everything that's been called in, in that area since April the first, since Ants has been closed?
Well, there's more than them, but this particular bar, it's a very noy, it's the noisiest club. They, they have outdoor concerts at the club behind me, and it doesn't bother us one bit. It's not that loud.
Okay.
But their music.
It's loud. Okay.
Off the chart.
Thank you, thank you.
You had a question?
Um, I'm fine, thanks.
Thank you. We will now hear from Corporate Glass.
Excuse, Chair, there's another person from the neighborhood that might have wanted to speak, but she didn't get her slip in, uh, on time, I didn't know she.
Come on.
Thank you, Chair.
Would you give the slip so that?
I get the data.
Ma'am, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, hi, everyone, I'm Madison Pochet, uh, 262 Wilkinson Street, and I'm currently the president of the Highland Neighborhood Association. So, this area is within our neighborhood association boundaries. And I think I can probably just, here in a second, everything that's been said by neighbors already today. This is the, you know, even though there are many bars in this area, even though there are many issues in this area, this is the one place that I've gotten calls about to see what we can do. It seems like an obvious noise complaint, if it was happening in some other part of town, it would have been stopped pretty quickly. I've talked to kids that don't like hearing the sound of gunshots in this area. Of course, it's not solving all of the problems, but anything that we can do to be respectful of the families in the neighborhood, that's, uh, in the surrounding blocks, I think would be pretty, pretty reasonable at this point.
Madison, how long have you lived in the Highland area?
About seven years.
You're fairly familiar with the different, the different amenities in the area as far as like bars?
Yes, yes, I am.
Would you, I mean, just as far as what's in the inventory? Do you think that there are certain things that you would classify as being like a neighborhood, something that services the neighborhood, or that's mostly neighborhood traffic versus something that is not?
Um.
What I mean by neighborhood traffic is literally like people that were more likely to, to, to live in generally the surrounding area versus coming from another part of town and, and being a little busier.
Yeah, I think there are definitely, uh, bars that, um, you know, where I, I know the owners, they're doing local events, um, you know, if there's a complaint from a neighbor, they're responsive. You know, their clientele are in the local community, and they may also live pretty close to where they work. Um, but I'm not as familiar with the owner of this bar.
I guess what, if, if, if we were gonna say like there is definitely like, the bars that have definitely seemed like neighborhood places for a long time, they, they kind of are.
Yeah. Right, they're establishments in the community.
Regular kind of college or just slightly post-college kind of crowd. Do you think that those bars have seen like a, a change in their clientele in the last year or so since Ants has been open?
Ooh, um, I actually don't know the answer to that. But, um, I mean, if I go up and down that street at eleven o'clock at night, you know, you can definitely see kind of a, uh, I don't know, things seem pretty calm. I mean, the, the neighborhood bars are well-marked, they have security guards, they have parking plans. When there's an issue, they're talking about it on their Facebook page. So, I can't, um, I haven't been, has much fun lately, so I can't speak to the clientele changes. But I think there's definitely neighborhood establishments that are responsive.
Ms. Pochet, I'll be happy if you send me your email to send you the calls on all the other bars in the area since April the first, since Ants has been closed, where you can review them.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to postpone this matter until September 12th, 2022, with the agreement of the applicant to remain closed during that time.
I second that motion.
It has been moved that, uh, this be postponed, it has been, it was motioned by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions?
It seems like we're just defer, we're just gonna delay and delay and delay to kind of like lay out a six-month time period so that they don't have to actually be suspended. That's what it looks like. Does that sound right?
Well, it, well, it seems like the Shreveport Police suspended their license. They only have to come before us if they want to appeal and open that back up sooner. Is that not correct? They are appealing the suspension, if they choose not to, that's their right, correct?
The end result is gonna be the same, it'll be shut down for six months.
This is a request for a suspension, not an appeal.
Officer Alcott, can you come up, please?
It's a request for a suspension.
And Chief Smith?
Yeah, this is not, they're not already suspended, it's a request for suspension, this is not an appeal.
Has the license of Fat Tuesday been suspended already?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Visconti.
So, this will be appealed.
You heard, you heard the motion of Councilman Nicholson, I believe?
Yes.
And I think he said it would be, uh, your, your client would close its doors until September 12th. Is that right? Is that the date?
Yes, yes, Mr. LeTeer.
And, uh, they would not have any type of, uh, opening until September 12th? And it's my understanding that you have agreed to work with the police department regarding all of the ordinances that you were alleged to have violated to come into compliance with those ordinances? And before you even decide to open back up, you would have another meeting with the police department and its staff before you would even, uh, desire to try to reopen, is that correct?
Mr. LeTeer, thank you. For the record, Wade Visconti, I actually am the attorney for NGD Doing Businesses Fat Tuesdays. The short answer to your question is that, yes, my client has agreed to remain closed until September 13th, um, and I have spoke with him before coming here today. He is agreeable to sitting down with the chief of police and anybody else that wishes to be present during that meeting to address any concerns that the city may have to try and rectify.
And Chief Smith and Officer Alcott, you've heard what Attorney Visconti said. Would y'all have any objection or disagreement with what Attorney Visconti just said?
Well, right now, because the permit is suspended, they can't open up unless the council reverses that suspension. So, whether they agree to it or not, they can't open and, or they can't carry and serve and sell alcohol, because their permit is effectively suspended for six months until council overturns that.
Okay.
If and until.
What happens after six months?
Then they have to, uh, then the suspension is lifted.
Without council approval?
Pardon me?
Without council approval.
Yes, this is, the, the, the chief and Mayor Perkins signed off on the suspension letter of six-month suspension on the permit.
And that was for April through September?
I believe the date on the letter was April 20th, so six months from that would actually be October 20th, not September, right?
So, why would we revisit this in September, we can just stay posted until October?
Thank you. Because I think they want to appeal it in September, but they want to have an opportunity to be able to. Well, I mean, to open up in September, they do.
I'm not trying to raise the temperature in the room, uh, but if you look at the April 20th letter, actually what it states is it's asking that the license be suspended. I believe that the proper procedure would actually be a hearing to suspend it. I don't think that the city, uh, without getting into kind of constitutional due process issues necessarily, the Shreveport Police Department doesn't, I don't think have the authority to unilaterally suspend a license, but it doesn't matter from my perspective if the, uh, if my client is willing to remain closed until September 12th, September 13th, that becomes a moot issue. You can classify it however you want to, if the result is the same, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add.
Yes, ma'am.
Several citizens have expressed concerns about this bar, which I, I'm very receptive to and concerned about. The action that I proposed and which Councilman Butcher has seconded will result in this bar remaining closed until at least September of this year. That doesn't mean that there'll be a law to reopen in September, but it does mean that to a certainty, you won't have to deal with the problems that you've described until that time. And so, from the citizen's perspective, this, uh, this is a good, uh, practical, uh, step forward, in my opinion. Thank you.
I just think that there's some, I'm, I'm not sure if we're splitting hairs on the procedurals of this. I've got our officer here saying that they are ostensibly suspended, but it seems like this action and what you're saying procedurally is that they can't unilaterally suspend. So, we're basically delaying the lay so that there's, delaying the game so that there's no recorded, there's no public record of an actual suspension, so much it's just that the, the game has been delayed. And then in September, y'all can appeal or whatever. Am I?
What?
I mean, I think I'm picking up what you're putting down.
That is, but my legal opinion, ma'am, which is not binding on the city council, is that I don't believe that there can be unilateral suspension. But what we are agreeable to, and what we think is in everybody's best interest, is agreeing to this issue being essentially postponed until September 12th or September 13th.
We have, uh, gone over the city ordinance that governs that time and time again to make sure that we were correct, and if my understanding of it was correct, the chief of police, uh, does have the right to suspend and close down, uh, a business. So, that's where I understand it, they're in black and white.
The liquor permit.
The liquor permit, and, uh, the appeal of my decision then is to the city council. But I do have the right to suspend that liquor permit.
I think, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think the end result of this is that Mr. Brooks needs to be, bring his business into, um, compliance and to be good neighbors. And if, in, if in this process that we started in April, since he's been closed, if in this process, everybody can come to the table and talk about it, because I am not into shutting down businesses that are legally zoned to be businesses. Now, but I am, I want them to operate legally. And if everybody, I, I know on numerous occasions, I had his former attorney reach out to me, I've had other, as Public Safety Chair, I've had other people reach out to me, and they have tried to come to the table to work this out. And, um, I think that suspending them until September is a, is a fair thing to do. And then, they are suspended, it's a fact, according to the police chief, and I take, you're, you're the chief.
Yes.
And then let's revisit this in September, but what needs to happen is Mr. Brooks and his attorney need to sit down with the chief, Sergeant Alcott, make sure all the, all the violations are taken care of, and make sure that his liquor licenses are in compliance with what the city law says. It's as simple as that, and then we'll revisit it in September, and if it is, and you give the recommendations to let him open up, then that's the way I'll vote.
Well, and just, just by way of concluding remark, Mr. Chairman, I will note that Councilman Bowman has placed on the agenda legislation which will require all bars in non-downtown areas to close at 2:00 AM. I'm fully supportive of that legislation, there is no reason that bars need to be open until four in the morning, and so to the citizens, uh, who have expressed concern about this particular bar opening at 12:30 or 1:00 and running until 5:00, they'll have to shut down at 2:00 AM, like everybody else, assuming that legislation passes, and that's gonna give some much-needed relief to our police officers who have better things to do than chase drunks at three o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, any other comments?
The motion is to post, make sure it be in the right.
Uh, uh, Councilman? Motion is to postpone.
Yes, the motion is to postpone until September 12th, which is the date of our first administrative conference in September, on the condition that the bar remain closed and, and given chief, uh, the chief's explanation, uh, they can't open until they have a successful appeal anyway.
They can open, they just can't, they can't function as a bar.
Thank you, thank you.
They can't contain, they can't possess, sell, barter, anything with alcohol.
But the condition of the motion is that they remain totally closed until September. That's my motion. No, I don't know, I, I agree, totally closed until September 12th, is my proposition.
The motion on the floor is by Councilman Nicholson that the bar would be closed completely until September the 12th or 13th. Closed completely, that's his motion. It was seconded by Councilman Butcher on the motion to be closed completely.
And what happens on September 12th?
He can appeal that at that point.
I just want everybody.
But, but in hopes, Councilman, that between now, since we've been, we've been throwing this volleyball back and forth since April the first, and a business has been closed, and obviously, the crime has not gone away in that area. Now, maybe right up against y'all's houses, but what about the people that live behind the other bars? Are they having that trouble?
The other bars are all by industrial sites, so it's not houses next to the other bars. The other thing about it is, Councilman, I respect what you're, the point you're trying to make, and I, I respect that we're trying to delay this so that we can at least have this be closed for that time period. But the constituents who've been coming to me have been asking, and I've been basically taking those complaints for well over a year and a half to the police department. This wasn't something that just started and was isolated to Ants, but the environment created around that particular venue changed the environment for the entire. created around that particular venue changed the environment for the entire bar scene in that area, and that's not something that's just going to remedy itself overnight, because the vacuum made by Ant's closing got filled by another bar up the road. You and I have both been out to see the traffic.
I've, I've seen it.
On the weekend, and I've been out on a couple of other little field trips myself, including on a ride-along with the police to look at how that traffic is operating and what's going on there. And part of the issue isn't necessarily what's happening inside the bars, but the traffic from people that just want to cruise and never actually have any intent of spending money in any of the bars. But the thing is, when we emptied out Cocopelli's, tried to fill it up on Texas Street in the two hundred block, when those bars shut down, people still needed somewhere to go, and in some places, that environment that you curate inside, which is where those violations come from, am I right, officer? The several violations that you all actually have on the table that brought us to this point, the other bars in that area are not here today because those things did not actually cum- accumulate to a point where what was happening inside those bars required this kind of a, this situation that we're having today. So basically, what I'm saying is, actually, I could actually get you to give the grocery list of what the infringements were that caused that liquor permit to be pulled. Wasn't it health violations, cameras that were not there, people serving without ABO?
So, all of the citations that were issued to, um, Mr. Brooks at twenty twenty-five Marshall Street, hang on just a second, let me get to my citations, were, um, so he did not have a proper drink price list as required for chapter ten, he did not have a valid alcohol permit, um, as required per chapter ten, he did not have a designation of a manager as required per chapter ten, refusal to allow inspection while we were there, um, to certain areas of the bar, um, until phone calls were made to attorneys. Um, the establishment itself was filthy, there were two employees there that did not have proper ABO cards, either on their person or one that had one that was expired, they did not have proper signage about, um, the security and the underage allowed inside the bar at the point of entry as required per chapter ten, and they did not have security cameras at all, out on premise functioning at all.
Thank you. That's a lot of violations, so it may not be that everything stopped around those other areas, that that environment was there, but this grocery list of indicators is the reason we're here, not just the crime outside, and it looks like to some degree, the environment for mayhem was created through those violations. That's why we're here. Now, I'm all about being able to correct those things, look at this in September, and come back and everything be hunky-dory, but it needs to be said that this, that we're not, we're not here about Little Johnny down the street, we're here about this. Little Johnny and all his little friends can go do whatever they're going to do, but that's not whose house we're talking about right now, we're talking about this, and we're talking about it because of those violations, not just the crime and mayhem and chaos out on the street, because there's some culpability for the city for that too, i.e. property standards. There's a house on your block that's being demolished right now, right, and this is, and that's part of it, we've been giving y'all indicators in several different ways, but as for this, I'm glad, I'm glad to vote on it, but it needed to be said, this is not just, oh, well, this is what's going on over here, and this packet of, of transgressions is also happening, and here's all the calls that have come in. These violations exist, and they are why we are here today.
Well, and I can speak as to the stack of papers that Councilman Boucher has, not all of those are crime-related calls for service, because I, I've researched those and printed those off for Miss Hube. But not all of them, some of them are traffic complaints, some of them are parking complaints, some of them are tactical patrols by officers, they're not all crime-related.
I, I reviewed them as well, there, there's assault and battery, there's noise complaints.
There are some in there, yes, sir.
There's, there's everything that we're, that we're going after this one bar for, and, and I'm, I'm with, uh, I think that there's a problem, it needs to be corrected, but I also am not into shutting businesses down that are willing to work, so I think we have a motion on the table, and I'd like to call for the vote.
The vote has been called for, it has been motioned, it has been seconded, that this would be completely closed until September twelfth or thirteenth. Nothing else?
Still a question?
I'm sorry.
September twelfth of twenty twenty-two, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If this fails, this question, if this fails, what, what, then what happens? I'm just asking, see the attorney.
It comes back up at the request of the Shreveport Police Department, because they're the ones who made the request.
Okay.
For the suspension of the alcohol beverage permit in the first place.
Six.
Okay.
Motion carries with six.
It has been postponed to be completely closed until September twelfth, thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank y'all very much. If there's nothing else to come before this special meeting.